Twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen Troy City Council meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Vince Messina from Woodside Bible Church with us today to lead us in the invocation. If you would please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor Slater. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, for the measure of health that's ours by your grace. Thank you for the beauty of the day that we've been able to enjoy. And we just pray now that you would be our unseen guest at this council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, for this council, Father, and all that they do in the direction and leading of our city. We pray that you'd give them wisdom and discernment and direction, Father, as they seek to make the city of Troy a continued nice place and a great place to live. We thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. The real call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Here.
I did receive correspondence from Councilman Campbell that he would be out of the county this evening and not able to attend, so I will move the resolution to excuse the absence of Councilman Campbell at the regular city council meeting of May third, two thousand and sixteen, due to being out of the county. Support by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we excuse the absence of Councilman Campbell at the regular city council meeting of May twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, due to being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. First on the agenda is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have three on the agenda this evening, but we will not be handling C two this evening. That will be postponed. But I have the honor of presenting a service commendation to Public Works Director Tim Rishnick, who has retired after twenty-three and a half years with the city of Troy. If I could ask him to meet me at the podium, I'd like to present that proclamation to him. I think everyone on council should come up and congratulate Tim also. Tim, it's my honor and privilege to present to you a service commendation as the Public Works Director on behalf of the Troy City Council. And if I could, I'd like to read it into the record. It is a distinguished career. Whereas Tim Rishnick began his career with the city of Troy in November of nineteen ninety-two as the Superintendent of Streets and Drains, he continued in that position until February of two thousand and three, when he was promoted to Public Works Director. And whereas Tim has extensive background in the field of public works, he came to the city of Troy from Lathrip Village, that huge city, where he was the DPS Superintendent for seven years. During his time there, he provided expertise related to the I six ninety-six project. Partly responsible for that, eh? Prior to that, he worked for the city of Pleasant Ridge as the Director of Public Works for five years and also worked for five years for the city of Mount Clemens as a supervisor at the Department of Public Works. And whereas Tim had a S two Water Distribution System Operator's License, he attended roadway lighting at the Light Systems Institute of North Carolina and attended Practical Management Supervisor and High Performance Supervisor Training at the University of Michigan and Wayne State University Management Center. And whereas during his twenty-three and a half years of service with the city of Troy, Tim developed and implemented an innovative program for replacing sidewalks throughout the community. He worked together with staff on insourcing within our Fleet Division, spearheaded the stormwater asset management wastewater, better known as SAW, grant program with outside consultants, worked with community development block grants, and served for many years on SACRA Board, working hard to move SACRA communities from dual to single stream recycling. And I think we accomplished that.
We're on our way.
We're close.
We're close.
And whereas Tim retired from the city of Troy on May tenth, two thousand and sixteen, after twenty-three and a half years of dedicated service and the utmost respect from the Troy employees and countless residents he has met, and of course, he's helped resolve their issues during his career with the city of Troy. And whereas, Tim will now enjoy more time with his wife Debbie, who is here with us this evening, married thirty-eight years on August fifth, two thousand and sixteen, daughter Megan, son Alex, daughter-in-law Terry, and grandsons Emmett and Harrison. Tim will also spend a lot of quality time fishing, hunting, golfing, gardening, and traveling. Now therefore be it known that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy take this opportunity to express their appreciation to Tim Rishnick for his professionalism and his many contributions to the city of Troy for the betterment of our community. And be it further known that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy, city management and the citizens of the city of Troy extend wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness to Tim during his retirement years. Presented this twenty-third day of May two thousand and sixteen, signed by myself, all members of city council, Tim, I can't thank you enough for your service to the city. Congratulations, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Okay Cindy, take one more, I was looking at her a little.
Yep, I'll say a couple of words.
Thank you all. So coming over here tonight, kind of thought of, you know, over the years and trying to count how many employees of the city that have come and gone over the years. You know, I've probably known four or five, maybe six hundred employees here at the city, all great people. They all had the city of Troy at their heart when they worked here, and they continue to do that, the people who continue to work here. You know, the thing that I won't miss is all the late nights, work in snow removal and some of the other things that would go on, events, coming to city council meetings. I think I've had enough. But, you know, I wouldn't give back a single one of them. I'd say that I learned a lot of stuff from all of those folks, including, you know, the residents, the press, the city council, the management, all the friends that I've made here. I do want to thank my wife Debbie for all those times because some of those evenings were not the easiest when you're raising two children, and she has to take that brunt of that time. Tell you a little story. My daughter, I needed to come and check streetlights out on Big Beaver and one evening, and obviously, you know, during the summertime, it doesn't get dark till nine, ten o'clock, so I coerced her to come with me, told her we'd go out and get ice cream, but we had to check some lights first. She never lets me forget that. My son also, anytime we were driving through Troy, we stopped quite often because there'd be a muffler on the side of the road and we'd throw that in the back of the truck. So they were part of my life here, too. And I thank you all.
We are waiting for Mumtaz to get here from Lansing, and as soon as she gets here, we will come back to that proclamation. Having trouble with my computer, so I'm going to have to do this by hand, I think, tonight. Just won't move. There are no carryover items this evening. There are no public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up to speak, so we will move to regular business. First on the agenda for regular business is I one, board and committee appointments. There are no mayoral appointments this evening, and we have one city council appointment. I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Pennington for that.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one appointment to the zoning board of appeals for the term that expires four thirty nineteen, and it's Paul McCowen, so I'd like to appoint Paul for that term.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we appoint Paul McCowen to the zoning board of appeals for the term that expires four thirty, two thousand and nineteen. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. McCowen. Next is I two, which is board and committee nominations. There are no mayoral nominations this evening, so I will turn the microphone again to Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. We have five different committees for appointment, or for nominations, so please hold your applause until I'm over, until I'm done. So we will start with the Animal Control Board. I'd like to nominate Gretchen Waters. For the Charter Revision Committee, I would like to nominate William Murray. For the Historic District Committee, I'd like to nominate W Kent Voight. For the Traffic Committee, I'd like to nominate R Mitch Huber. And last but not least, for the Volunteer Firefighter Board, I'd like to nominate Brian Kishnik and Tom Darlene. Ooh. Ooh. That's all.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate those that were read into the record by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington this evening. For each of those, discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Motion passes, and thank you for starting to fill those vacancies and for those that volunteered. There is no closed session request this evening, so we will move to I four, which is the proposed agreement with the Troy Historic Society for operation of the Troy Historical Village, and also to schedule a study session to discuss the Declaration of Public Trust. And we see we have Assistant City Attorney Alan Motzni here this evening. Good evening, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of city council. Before you is the two thousand and sixteen renewal and amended restatement of the agreement by and between the city of Troy and the Troy Historical Society for the operation, management, and use of the Troy Historic Village, but I'll just refer to it as the proposed two thousand and sixteen operational agreement, which is easier to get that out, purposes of brevity. The proposed agreement incorporates many of the provisions of an agreement that's now in effect in the city that was entered into in two thousand and eleven with the Troy Historical Society for the operation of this historic village, and we've outlined the changes that are in the current proposal. Thank you, Laurie. But the general gist of the current agreement, as well as the proposed agreement, is that under the agreement, the city continues to own the land, the buildings, and the collections that make up the Troy Historic Village, which is located on Waddles. But under the agreement, the Troy Historical Society is authorized to occupy those premises, but also under the agreement, the Historical Society does the everyday management and operation of the village. Troy's responsibilities under the agreement are, many of them are set forth in paragraph twelve, which includes providing an annual appropriation for maintenance, utilities, insurance, computers, and the like, and again specified in paragraph twelve. Troy, under that same paragraph, subsection B, would also be responsible for maintaining a separate fund that would be available for providing repairs and improvements in order to ensure compliance with chapter thirteen of the city code. As many of you are familiar with, chapter thirteen is the historical preservation ordinance. The museum properties are an historical district, and therefore, under our own ordinance, we're required to maintain those buildings so they maintain their historical integrity. And so, one of the things that this agreement requires is that the city maintain a separate fund for those repairs. As I've indicated, the memo outlines some of the changes that the current agreement has from the two thousand and eleven agreement. Many of those changes are associated with the fact that the two thousand and eleven agreement involved a new relationship with the Historical Society, and there were items in that agreement such as startup funds, how we would handle existing grants, and how they would be transferred. So those provisions, of course, have been eliminated from the current proposal. The current proposal also has a ten-year term, whereas the two thousand and eleventh agreement, two thousand and eleven agreement was a five-year term. And under the proposed two thousand and sixteen agreement, there's four options to renew. Now, the option is the city, at the end of ten years, in two thousand and twenty-six could renew for a ten-year period, or a five-year period, or of course, exercise the option not to renew at all. The reason we have those alternatives, ten or five, is because although we've enjoyed a great working relationship with the Historical Society in two thousand and twenty-six, it just allows some flexibility and to give us that additional flexibility. Another change is the two thousand and sixteen operational agreement also has a provision, again under the city's maintenance obligations, to provide up to two thousand dollars to retain an architect, one that would have experience in historical preservation, again for the purposes of ensuring compliance with chapter thirteen. Again, there's a few other changes, but for the most part, we have incorporated the provisions of the present agreement. And I would indicate that we're recommending approval of the two thousand and sixteen agreement, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that we've really enjoyed a great working relationship with the Troy Historical Society. They've done an excellent job in providing programs and making sure the facilities at the village are available to the public for educational purposes. They complied with the two thousand and eleven agreement, including the provisions requiring them to provide financial statements. And based on that, our initial proposal, our proposed resolution, is for the city council to approve the two thousand and sixteen agreement. But as you are aware, as the mayor indicated, we have a second proposal, which would schedule a study session for September twenty-sixth at six P M. to discuss the concept of establishing a public trust. And the reason for that provision or that request is, as we're discussing the operational agreement with representatives of the Historical Society, there was an issue or some concern with the fact that individuals who contribute or make donations to the Troy Historic Village want to ensure that there's some mechanism in place so that their contributions will continue to be used for Troy Historic Village purposes, as opposed to being used for some other purpose. And one of the mechanisms or legal structures for such an arrangement would be an establishment of a public trust as it relates to the historic village property. The concept of using a public trust for museum or historic village properties is a relatively new one. In the state of Michigan, we have researched the issue, and we've had some discussions with the village or with the Historical Society regarding the trust, but because of the uniqueness and because it would be essentially a new, a new program that we haven't seen anywhere else in Michigan, we thought it would be a good idea to explore the issues relating to a public trust at a study session, as opposed to bring it to you for the first time at a regular city council meeting. So in addition to recommending approval of the agreement, we also recommend scheduling the study session. I would be glad to answer any questions. I would note that there are representatives of the Historical Society present, as well as the executive director of the Troy Historic Village, Laurie Campbell, who may be able to answer your questions as well.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions from council for Mr. Motzni? I think you did a good job of explaining it. Thanks. Thanks, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would note that we were handed a yellow copy this evening for I four, which includes a scheduling date for that study session, and if someone on council so chooses, it would be nice to have the entire resolution read into the record as printed on the yellow Councilwoman Abraham.
I will move the amended I four proposed agreement with Troy Historic Society for operation of Troy Historical Village. Schedule a study session to discuss a declaration of public trust. Resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the two thousand and sixteen renewal and amended restatement of the agreement by and between the city of Troy and the Troy Historical Society for use, operation, and management of the Troy Historic Village, and the mayor and the city clerk are authorized to execute the document, a copy of which will be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. Be it further resolved that a study session of the Troy City Council is scheduled for Monday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, at six P M. to be held in the city council boardroom to discuss issues related to the establishment of a public trust, designating that real estate structures and collections that comprise the Troy Historic Village be held in trust for the benefit of the public. Support.
By Councilwoman Abraham and supported by Councilman Hoderick, that we approve I four as amended by the yellow document and read into the record by Councilwoman Abraham. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for everyone coming tonight. We look forward to working with the Historical Society for ten more years. Thank you. Thank you, Alan. Next is I five, the approval of the Civic Center market study proposal by Gibbs Planning Group, and I will ask City Manager Kishnik to intro this item.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a continuation of the retreat from earlier this year, conversation regarding future use or opportunities for the Civic Center complex that City Hall, the police department, sits on Civic Center Drive, town center out to Liverny. On Friday night, as you all recall, we had the Gibbs Planning Group and the mayor of Carmel, Indiana, present at that meeting, as well as Matt Farrell from COR, was also there, participating in the sort of breakout sessions and planning some, you know, conceptually planning the area. So what this proposal does is it gets us started for the concept, the design, and the market analysis, to evaluate the site, look at other areas, and present something to the city council before December of this year. And I get that question a lot, when do we think this will be done? The target is before December of this year, but that's, that's the date. And it would kick off if this is approved June fourteenth with the joint study session with the Planning Commission and the DDA and the city council. So as the retreat included all three groups, as well as staff, we plan to continue that. Also in this agreement are many, many stakeholder meetings, I think thirty was the number. And looking at the site in at least two different ways, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, what they will look at, should City Hall stay, should the library stay, should it not, should there, you know, what, what types of opportunities are there, and what business case makes sense. I would also imagine the financial ideas team would be involved in, in that process, as well as providing input, again, from what's the business case standpoint, does it make sense or not, what's feasible? And give, I'm sorry, COR, Matt Farrell is here tonight representing the project, and they're the ones who are actually tasked to, to take this new urbanist concept that the group comes up with and, and lift off, and from a marketed standpoint, from a practical standpoint. So we recommend approval of this study. So we recommend approval of this study as the start of the Civic Center analysis.
Thank you. Questions from council for City Manager Kishnik? I would just point out that the amount of money that's in this resolution was approved in the budget that was just approved.
It was.
Would somebody like to move this resolution to get it on the table? Councilman Henderson?
Sure, I'd like to move I-4 as printed, excuse me, I-5. I-5 as printed.
Support?
By Councilman Henderson and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve I-5, the approval of the Civic Center market study proposal by Gibbs Planning Group as printed. Discussion? Councilwoman Hoderick.
I just wanted to say, I'm very pleased with how this is proceeding. I heard the city manager use a term that I think is important, and that is the business case of this. I think the stakeholders of the city should understand that we are moving forward in a very pragmatic, logical way with people who are very skilled and professional in looking at this. And it's an exciting time to lock arms together. I love that the first study session kicks off with the groups that you mentioned. I'm pleased to see who we're working with. Met Matt on several occasions and watched him in the community. All of us who have a love and a passion for the Civic Center property should feel confident that what we're going to be looking at will be done with the best minds coming together in a visionary, pragmatic, business case type of focus. And as a taxpayer and a property owner in the city, I'm very excited about it.
Any other discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are looking forward to this project. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a late submittal, which is I-6. I believe it's on a yellow sheet on the council table this evening. And in order to get this late submittal on the table, I will move a resolution that the Troy City Council hereby waives City Council Rule Number 6A Agenda, regular meeting agenda, in order to take action on Item I-6 Resolution in support of Senate Bill 557 as presented. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve the resolution to waive the rules to hear I-6 as a resolution. The vote on waiving the rules, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-6 is a resolution in support of Senate Bill 557. I know everyone on council has discussed this issue sometimes at length. And if you will note, attached to this resolution is the document that shows the testimony of City Manager Brian Kishnik at the hearing in Lansing. And I just want to point out, I applaud City Manager Kishnik, what an excellent representation of the city of Troy. Thank you for doing that. So having said that, I'd like to get this on the table for discussion. I know some council members want to talk about this item, so I'm going to read the resolution into the record so that everyone knows the content of the resolution. Whereas Senator Marty Nolenberg sponsored Senate Bill 557 amending Public Act 51 to correct unfair funding imposed on municipalities with state highways within their incorporated limits, such as Troy. And whereas, City Manager Kishnik provided testimony on Thursday, May 12, 2016, at the Michigan State Transportation Hearing, and specifically cited the proposed I-75 project scheduled to begin in 2016, a copy of which is attached to this resolution. And whereas, City Manager Kishnik's testimony reveals that based on the cost of the proposed I-75 project, an estimated total cost to the city will be $9.6 million. Over the eight-year timeline of 2016 to 2024, Troy would be required to contribute $1.2 million annually. And whereas, Senate Bill 557 would correct the unfair funding by removing the burden of the I-75 construction costs from local municipalities that have portions of the trunk line within their borders. And whereas, there will be another Michigan State Transportation Hearing to discuss Senate Bill 557 on Thursday, May 26, 2016. Therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby supports Senate Bill 557 as sponsored by Senator Marty Nolenberg. Support?
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I-6 Resolution in support of Senate Bill 557 as read this evening. Discussion, Councilwoman Hoderick?
I appreciate that this resolution is on the table for our vote tonight. Those of you that follow council proceedings and city activities know that I tend to be pretty upbeat about everything that's going on. I look at things from all sides, and even if at first I'm not sure I support something, I will try to argue myself into support it and can generally find the rationale for how things are proceeding. In my two and a half years on council, and even several years before that, as just a citizen paying close attention, this is the first time I've been completely uncomfortable with a project that's unfolding in my midst. I felt blindsided by it as an elected official. And I guess I just want to be on record as saying, I'm very uncomfortable with this project as it's unfolding. You know, on paper, the idea of adding a lane and increasing the ability for traffic to move, of course, I support that. The economic vitality of the region, I've been a fighter for the stewardship of our dollars to make sure our infrastructure, our safety are prioritized. But I take this route every day, and one of the key factors that prevents traffic moving is not even getting corrected by this project. I'm frustrated by that. That's the M-59, I-75 interchange. I live the reality of this every day in my day-to-day life. I'm not seeing the benefit. When it comes to my attention that out of our funds here in our city, as we are seeking to plate spin and look at different things and prioritize, that these kinds of dollars, $9.6 million, have to go to this project, I'm very frustrated by it. I'm very pleased that Senator Nolenberg has worked on this bill. And I guess I just wanted to publicly state what I have said in conversations with him that the city manager has heard from me. We're elected to be stewards of these dollars, and I think this was a great idea and a great plan when it started years ago and before we hit the downturn that we hit. The downturn hit, and I feel like this did not get reprioritized, as we have so many other things in our community and around the state. We're proceeding with something as we've taken dollars from retirees to balance the budget at the state level. We've taken shared revenue dollars from communities and left many of them cash-strapped. And yet, this proceeded on. And I'm not understanding how that happened. I don't know how. I'm pretty sure I can't fix it at this point. But I can stand to say this is unfair to expect communities and elected officials who didn't see it coming to pony up these kinds of funds for a road that's basically going to pull people back and forth and bypass us. If the idea is that everyone in the state benefits from I-75, then communities along this pathway should not bear an unfair burden like this one. So I really appreciate the effort to bring this resolution forward. And just as we're getting emails from people that now have the sound barriers from the highway have been cut down, and they're frustrated, and they're looking to us to come up with funds to now build sound barriers, this is a state project that, you know, now we're all caught in the crosshairs of how we remediate the harm to our own community and our own backyards. And I feel really terrible about it. And I'm frustrated that I couldn't have done more to head it off at the pass. I just didn't see it coming. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Could I ask one question? Do we have to indicate in the resolution where we want the resolution to go? Typically, I know we do designate that. Do we need to do that in this resolution?
Mayor, I'm assuming that you'll want it to go to the State Senate Transportation Committee and also to Senator Nolenberg, and I'm sure that Ms. Dixon will certainly be taking care of that if this resolution is passed. If you did want it to go to others and you wanted to specify, it would certainly be appropriate for you to indicate that in the meeting tonight as well.
Personally, I'd like to see it go to the other affected cities. Royl Oak, Madison Heights. I'd like it to go to County Commissioner Wade Fleming. And we'll reach out to other council members if there's some other place that they'd like to see the resolution go. City Manager Kishnik?
Mayor, I do know at the hearing, SEMCOG was a major advocate for the bill as well, and they're very in tune with what's going on.
And I believe MML.
Sorry, yes, MML as well.
MML as well. And if anyone else comes up with something else after the meeting, if we could just contact City Clerk Dixon, I'm sure she would get that to others. Thank you. Any further discussion? I just want to commend staff for putting this together on such short notice today for me, after having a discussion with other members of council. I know it's an important item for everyone. So thank you. And thank you to City Manager Kishnik for your testimony. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Hopefully, this Thursday, that Transportation Committee will take action. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. I will note that there was a late submittal on the table, J-6. I believe there was a correction in that document. So if someone is going to move all items on the Consent Agenda, please indicate that includes the correction of J-6. Anyone wish to pull an item on the Consent Agenda this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the Consent Agenda, in addition to revised J-6, amended J-6 that we have on our table as printed.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, approved by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve all items on the Consent Agenda as printed, including the late submittal, J-6, this evening. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. If you were here for a Consent Agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next on the agenda are memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none this evening. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals this evening. So next is council comments. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to bring up, and I think we have a video that can be queued, Congressman Dave Trot on May 12th addressed the House floor for about a minute, minute and a half in a presentation that commended our, or recognized the Historical Society and Village for their 50th year. And I thought it would be interesting to show that video if we could. And to give credit to Dave Souza and Doug, our former councilman Doug Teetz, for really putting this together and put it in the hands of Congressman Trot.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, I rise today to recognize the achievements of the Historical Society in Troy, Michigan. The Society is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year. Since 1966, this group of volunteers has been a valuable resource in our community. Their work has created the Troy Historic Village, a cultural destination which allows visitors to explore Michigan's history and learn about the story of the city of Troy. History is a treasure that must be preserved and used for education. We need to understand our past in order to build a better future. Over the past 50 years, Historical Society members have led efforts to preserve 10 historic buildings at the village, and they provide educational programs for 12,000 students annually. Madam Speaker, on behalf of the people of the southeast Michigan, I want to congratulate the Troy Historical Society on its 50th anniversary. I am confident that in the years to come, the dedicated volunteers at the society will continue contributing to our community and connecting people with Troy's rich historical heritage. I yield back my time.
Would have been nice for them to put C-SPAN, to put the city of Troy next to Auburn Hills, but we'll take what we get.
We'll take what we get, yeah. Thank you. Well done. Thank you to Congressman Trot for doing that for us. Any other council comments this evening? Sure would be nice if somebody had a couple of comments. We're trying to delay for about two minutes while we wait for someone to get here from Lansing. Does anyone have, Councilwoman Abraham? Councilwoman Hoderick?
I could have come up with something. Do you want to go? I can go. All right. Related to this piece on the Historical Society, I want to recognize and reflect on the History Makers event that we had recently. It was just last week, I believe. We've had so many events that they are all blending together. Wednesday night it was. And Mayor Gene Stein and Executive Director of the Historic Village, Lorraine Campbell, together with the MC, Brooks Patterson, our Oakland County Executive, presented awards Wednesday night to people who were history makers and left an incredible legacy to the city of Troy. You know, I can't remember everyone's names that were acknowledged that night, but former city manager Frank Gerstenekker was one, and it was a privilege and an honor to hear his contribution and to have him there with his family and take a moment to reflect on the work that he did and how it set us up for where we are today, which is an incredibly wonderful place. wonderful place. He was very humble in receiving his award, as were all the recipients that night, and it was just a really, it was the first event of that kind, and it was really well done. And I'm very appreciative of that opportunity to reflect back on the work that these folks did because it does inform and provoke us to move forward wisely.
Thank you. Now, we are going to revisit C three on the agenda packet, which is a proclamation from the city of Troy and the Oakland County Commissioners to recognize May 2016 as Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders Month. And I would like to ask County Commissioner Wade Fleming to come to the podium along with Muntaz for a presentation and proclamation.
Come around here, Muntaz. Thank you for driving so hard. I believe you drove all the way from Lansing, is that correct?
All the way from Lansing.
And you literally just walked in the room. We know how traffic is, so thank you for coming. This is very important for Oakland County and the city of Troy to present this to you. It's a very important, I'd just like to read this to you, and then you can do, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. We presented one last week to Asian Pacific American Chamber of Commerce, the executive director. We did this out in Oakland County. But we wanted to do something here in the city of Troy, and as I read through this, I think they'll understand why it's so important. Whereas Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month is a national celebration during the month of May to recognize the tremendous contributions of Americans of Asian and Pacific Islander descent. And whereas according to the 2010 census, the Asian population grew faster than any other race group in the United States between 2000 and 2010. And whereas the Asian and Pacific American population grew in the United States by 56% between 2000 and 2013. And whereas the Asian and Pacific American population grew in the United States to 19.4 million, reflecting a growth rate of 2.9% between 2012 and 2013. And whereas Asian and Pacific Americans have enriched our culture, excelling in many fields, including education, business, science, technology, government, sports, and the arts. And whereas countless Asian and Pacific Americans have answered the call to protect the cause of freedom by serving in our armed forces. And whereas Oakland County is home to the second largest number of Asian population in Michigan and nearly half of Asians in the tri-county area. And whereas the city of Troy is home to the largest number of Asians in the region comprising of almost 21% of the total population. You knew all this, didn't you? I'm not telling you anything. You're not surprised, she knows all this. You talk this all the time, I'm sure. But many of our viewers and listeners don't know. And it's an education for me as well. It's so important. Whereas the entrepreneurship and innovation of Asian Pacific Americans have strengthened Oakland County's economy and Troy. Whereas Asian and Pacific Americans contribute greatly to the economic, social, cultural, and civic life of Oakland County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oakland County Board of Commissioners hereby designates May 2016 as Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month in Oakland County and encourages our citizens, governmental agencies, businesses, and schools to celebrate and recognize the achievements of Asian Americans, signed by myself as Oakland County Commissioner and our Oakland County Commissioner Chairman of the Board, Mike Gingo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Love you to have us.
Your turn, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you again, Muntaz. How are you? Let me echo that, thank you for driving from Lansing to be with us this evening. Our meeting went a little quicker than we thought it was going to, but thank you for driving down here. Not to be outdone by the Oakland County Commissioners, Troy also is proclaiming Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month for May 2016. And I have a resolution in my hand that's signed by myself and all members of City Council proclaiming that month. Many words that were just spoken are written in our proclamation, but let me just highlight a couple of other items. So whereas the vast diversity of languages, religions, and cultural traditions of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders continues to strengthen the fabric of American society. And whereas from the arrival of the first Asian and Pacific Islander immigrants more than 150 years ago, those arrived then and are still coming today, as well as those native to the Hawaiian Islands and to our Pacific Island territories, all possess the common purpose of fulfilling the American dream and leading a life bound by the American ideals of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And of course, during Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we remember the challenges and celebrate the achievements that define our history. Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have endured and overcome hardships and heartaches. And of course, whereas amidst those struggles, Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have contributed, as indicated by County Commissioner Wade Fleming, in a great and significant ways in all aspects of our society. They have created works of literature and art, thrived as American athletes, and prospered in the world of academia. Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have played a vital role in our nation's economic and technical growth by establishing successful enterprising and pushing the limits of science. Our resolution goes on to talk more about what you have meant to our community and America. But now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Troy hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 as Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that we invite all Troy residents to recognize and celebrate the vital role Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have played in our nation's history as well as their outstanding achievements today and into the future. This is signed the 23rd day of May 2016, and like I said, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations to all Asian and Pacific Islanders, and thank you for coming this evening and spending the night with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Want to say something?
Yes.
Good evening. Driving from Lansing was worth, worth, very much worth. I got two, and I'm so proud of, and I'm so, so encouraged, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart, all the councilmen and women, the council, mayor, and the commissioner. I thank you so much. It's really a pleasure and an honor to receive this on behalf of our community, which is so diverse. And I'm myself a believer in diversity. You see, this is, I'm a civil rights commissioner, and the Michigan Civil Rights Commission, and we really try to bring everyone together, make sure that everybody's rights are protected in terms of religion, caste, race, in every aspect. So that's what we were doing right now, but I said, this is my place. And my son, sitting there, he is a UFD Mercy Dental School third year. He graduated from tri-high school, both of my sons. Troy is my home for the past, I don't remember how many years, so I don't want to disclose that. But thank you once again for this honor, and have a great evening. I hope though this becomes, Troy becomes more diverse, stronger, flourishes, and prospers more. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Muntaz. Thank you for driving here. Okay, we're still on council comments, and I would call on Councilman Baker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a brief announcement. On Monday, Memorial Day, this next Monday, the city of Troy is having its Memorial Day celebration that starts at 11 o'clock a.m. out in Veterans Plaza. We have a great guest speaker, and it's a great event for all the family from age three to 93 or something like that. But please come on and join us. I know I'll be there as well as my family, and I'm sure several of us will be as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Abraham?
I just wanted to call attention to some events that occurred last week, with it being Police Appreciation Week. On Thursday, we recognized three officers and a police service aide who gave their lives in service to our community. And I think it's very appropriate that our citizens appreciate what type of service that takes, what type of commitment to the community to give your life. You know, there's certainly the news, a lot of unfortunately discord between the community sometimes with the police department. And I think we're so fortunate in Troy that we have a very strong community. The police outreach, as exhibited by the open house this past Saturday with events for the entire family, really helps nourish the sense of trust and commitment, not just between the police department and the city staff, but with the community. They're all in together. They care about this community as much as the people that live here. And I just wanted to recognize those three officers and the police service aide.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other council comments this evening? Was going to say something, but I think I'll pass. Next on the agenda are the reports. Any member in council that wishes to discuss any of the reports on the agenda this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening, so I want to thank you for coming this evening. Thank you, Commissioner Wade Fleming, for sticking around all night, and we are adjourned.